Call the Wilmer City Council meeting to order for Monday, December 16th. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Here.
Meskey.
Here.
Schwantis.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Alvarado.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda from the council? The city administrator has a couple that he wants to add, but in the council, are there any? Administrator Grammets.
Mayor and city council members, item number 18, fairly close to the end of the meeting tonight, probably should be the last item on the agenda, so I would recommend moving that to right before adjourning, so it would be number 20.
Okay. And then, did you want to ask about the negotiation?
Oh, I can do that at this point, too.
Or did you want it as an agenda item, or are you just going to cover it at the end?
I was just going to cover it at the end, but basically, if you wanted to think about it at the end of the meeting, I think the fifth Monday is January, December 30th, and in order to plan for what is going to occur that night, or not occur, as the case may be, we need to know if the council is looking to have a mini-retreat on that particular evening, or if they're going to bypass that because it's in between Christmas and New Year's, and then pick the next one up on the fifth Monday in the future.
And so, we'll have that as a discussion item right above going into executive session, so after the council committee meeting dates are announced. Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the amended agenda discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry. Next, we have the consent items. Ms. Thompson.
On tonight's consent agenda, we have for council's approval, the city council minutes of December 2nd, Wilmer Municipal Utility Board minutes of December 9th, accounts payable report for November 27th through December 11th, reappointment as members of the Police Commission, Mike Kubisch, Planning Commission, Jeffrey Kimpeling and Cletus Frank, Rice Hospital Board, Peggy Seitzma, John Saunders and Ken Beam, Human Rights Commission, Joe Benson, Hamdi Khosar and Ben Larson, Municipal Utilities Commission, Bruce DeBleek, Zach Mabub and Justin Mattern, Pioneer Land Library Board, Mary Husing, Economic Development Commission Operations Board, Lester Heike, Charter Commission, which these are appointed by the Chief District Judge, would be Richard Engen and Richard Falk, council's acceptance, we have the building inspection report for the month of November, and the Charter Commission minutes of June 11th, council's information, application for appointment to Municipal Utilities Commission, Cole Erickson, and the City Hall Task Force minutes of August 20th.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Discussion. Councilmember Osmus.
I would like to pull C, accounts payable.
With the exception of item C, the consent items, all in favor of approving those, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, that motion does carry. Councilmember Osmus.
Thank you, Mayor. On page 24 of our packet, in the counts receivable, there was about $4,000 in Hanson advertising expenses, and it said that it was for promotional items, and I was just curious if that was something that we give to the Convention and Visitors Bureau for Wilmer promotional items, or perhaps was that things that we passed out at the holidays parade?
Mr. Grammets, or I'm not aware of what it is, or Mr. Olkins?
I'm not finding it on the...
Hanson advertising on page 24.
It's listed as general supplies.
No.
Mr. Olkins, do you have?
That was for the Main Street program under, through the Planning and Development Services Office, based on the coding that was on that sheet.
Okay, I wasn't sure what the, who the, it was all one coding, so I thought it was, I figured it was to just one entity, but, and I saw that was, one of them was for the table covering for the Main Street, but, so that's why I thought maybe it was for the holidays. I just thought if people wanted to know, that was part of what was spent to hand out things at the holidays parade, but it's something else, or something we do at conventions?
Yeah, actually, the third item down says Main Street emblem, so...
Then I will make a motion to pass C, accounts payable.
Motion made in second to approve consent item C, accounts payable report for November 27th through December 11th. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry. Next, we have open forum, and on the agenda, we have four individuals who would like to address the council this evening. Again, please come to the podium, you'll have a three-minute time frame on that, and our city clerk keeps track of the time, and come to the podium, state your name, and whether you reside within the city of Wilmer or outside of the city of Wilmer. Ms. Heidi Aman.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Heidi Jo Aman. I reside in the city of Wilmer. I am here this evening to tell you that I have submitted an application for approval for the Human Rights Commission. I do believe, after seeing the approval of three, that there may be one open seat remaining for the year of 2020, so I just wanted to let you know that I have submitted my application for that. This may be a little bit different standard of doing this, but I believe in a hands-on and face-forward approach to introductions to you and the public that may be watching this evening, versus making a decision and not knowing who the individual is. I'm sure you'd rather see and meet me in person instead of simply approving a piece of paper. Maybe some of you know, but I will inform you, I've been a flight attendant with Delta Airlines for 29 years. I've had extensive training in safety and security, cultural diversity, human trafficking training. I have a business degree in business administration, marketing, management and economics from Marshall University, or Marshall State, I guess it's Southwest Minnesota State or something now. I have been with the Fortress Men's Ministry from its inception seven years ago, having recently just resigned my board position on the Executive Board last Thursday was my last meeting with that. I've also been involved with several church councils. First Covenant Church, I was on the board, as well as I was deacon of the Outreach Evangelism and Missions Commission, and at Calvary Lutheran, I was on the Worship Commission there. I've also been involved in several voluntary positions and productions at the Barn Theater in Wilmer and the New London Little Theater. So at this time, I guess we all have, I believe I submitted my application on Friday, I believe, to the mayor, but then I did make copies for each and every one of you for consideration, so I would greatly appreciate that you look over my application, and I would appreciate your support and approval, and I thank you and wish you all a very Merry Christmas.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Ben Larson. Please state if you reside within the city or outside of the city.
Ben Larson, I live in Wilmer. Give me one second here, let me get my keyboard off here. Heidi forgot to add on that she runs a local Muslim hate group, so I think that should also go on her resume. I'll speak in support of the resolution to continue to accept refugees, but first, a little history lesson. In my free time, I like to research hate groups, and I like to look at the history of hate groups.
And I'm just going to tell you that no attacks on the public or on any public officials.
Sure, sounds good. The nativist rhetoric we have heard about this resolution that we're going to hear tonight is nothing new in the United States. For example, the Know Nothing Party from the 1840s and 50s, this was an xenophobic anti-immigration party. This political party attacked Catholic immigrants who were largely German and Irish, they probably roughed up my great-grandpa. This group also opposed Chinese immigration in California in the 1880s. They also had many conspiracy theories, most believed that there was a Romanist plot to tear down civil and religious liberty. They also believed that all Catholic immigrants would be loyal to the Pope over the United States, I'm sure that sounds familiar to nativist conspiracy lines of today. What we have heard, and what we will hear tonight probably from the opposition of this resolution, are modern-day incarnations of the Know Nothings, both ignorant and nativist, both have the fear of other, that other just has changed every decade, but their rhetoric and conspiracy theories have remained. I'm proud that the city and county have largely been able to see through these groups and the rhetoric for what it is, hate-filled nativism. They can dress it up in the cross and the flag all they want, but that's not new either. I'm proud to live in a community that, time and time again over the last few years, has stood up for new residents in this community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Ms. Anita Flo. Please state whether you reside within the city or outside of the city.
Hello. I am Anita Flo, and I live in, within the city of Wilmer, and I'd like to expand on that history lesson a little bit. First off, I'd like to say that I really enjoy living in Wilmer, feel we have the best of small towns, no traffic jams or rush hour, and a cosmopolitan, diverse shopping opportunities and restaurants downtown, and I really appreciate the economic contributions of refugees and immigrants in general. But the history lesson is from my personal family history. Some members of my family, the Sublet family, Abraham Sublet, were persecuted in Europe. They had to go from France to two different locations in Germany, to England, before they finally made it to Virginia. And one report says that when they hit Virginia, they were expecting to go to a settled town of Williamsburg, but were sent by the governor to the frontier, and they weren't prepared. Things didn't go well. So they were pretty not, they weren't respected, they got treated rough, I mean, they're just pretty useless refugees, and, you know, I'm not really exciting, but I'm one of those descendants. Now, back in the 1800s, back in the day, some of the sublets were kind of well-known. One of them was a part-owner in the Rocky Mountain Fur Company. Two of them founded forts, one of them was Fort William, named after himself, William Sublet, then it became Fort Laramie. There's a mountain range named after them, cities, counties, all that kind of stuff. Sure, you guys don't remember all that, those sublets, but you might remember another one of his descendants, Senator John McCain. He's descended from some pretty worthless refugees that got chased all over the place, until they found refuge here, and I think we should offer that to others, who, they and their descendants may of great value, we don't know how valuable they may be. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, Mr. Ron Christensen. State whether you reside within the city or outside of the city.
Ron Christensen, I still live in the city. First off, this past weekend, we had a hockey tournament for Squirtz in Wilmer that the Wilmer Hockey Association put on, very successful, and as I was driving home Saturday evening by Robins Island, the cars were out into the highway going in, so I suspect all these neighboring communities that came to the hockey arena went and visited it, they must have had a record there, so hats off to the Wilmer Hockey Association. Second of all, you know, this country that we live in, this state that we live in, this county that we live in, and the city of Wilmer are about as divided as I've ever seen in my lifetime. We don't need any more divisiveness with a resolution, which is on the council's agenda tonight, I believe it's number nine. You know, the left is mad, the right is mad, and we don't need, like I say, another divisive resolution. My suggestion is to table it and leave it there, as it is not required by the country, by the state, by the county or by the city. From what I know, it is recommended by only one entity, and that's the Human Rights Commission. Now, I was on the Human Rights Commission in 1994, when I was elected to the council. We dealt with human rights violations, and that's what the commission is supposed to deal with. At that time, it was Elm Lane Trailer Park we were going through, and there was a lot of Hispanics that had their human rights violated, and we dealt with several of them. But after a few years, there wasn't any, so we disbanded, and it was brought back, I believe, one or two years ago, Marv. That entity, the Human Rights Commission, is supposed to be non-political, folks, agreed? Non-political. You listened to the last two meetings. It's become so political, and there's several individuals on there that are emitting hatred for other people, especially one county commissioner. We don't need that. I would also volunteer to be on the Human Rights Commission. I think you'll be full if Heidi gets on that commission, but again, my recommendation is to table that resolution. It isn't required by anybody. It's a politically feel-good thing by a small group of people. I don't think anybody in this room is against immigration, or immigrants, or illegal refugees, but we don't need any more division in this city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next on the agenda, we have a resolution consenting to continued initial resettlement of refugees. Ms. Shelley Huseby.
My name is Shelley Huseby. I'm here tonight as the Chair of the Human Rights Commission for the city of Wilmer. On February 5th, 2018, Resolution Number 1810 was passed declaring the city of Wilmer as a welcoming city. It stated, "Now, therefore be it resolved that the Wilmer City Council, as representative of the city of Wilmer, hereby declare and resolve the city of Wilmer as a welcoming city to all who wish to come and contribute to the public good and future success of the community." On the 26th of September, 2019, the President issued Executive Order 13888 on enhancing state and local involvement in refugee resettlement, a policy that permits state and local government officials, with limited exceptions, to support the resettlement of refugees into their areas. On November 19th, 2019, the city of Wilmer Human Rights Commission met and discussed their support for refugees and is encouraging continued resettlement in Wilmer. Commission unanimously supports a resolution whereby Wilmer consents to the initial resolution of refugees and a copy of this resolution to be transmitted to the U.S. Department of State, Bureau of Population, Refugees and Migration. Caney County has also passed a resolution on December 3rd, 2019. Building on our welcoming city resolution, the Human Rights Commission recommends the city council adopt a resolution consenting to continued initial resettlement in Wilmer, Minnesota. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, what are your wishes?
I make a motion that we adopt a resolution consenting to continued initial resettlement of refugees in Wilmer, Minnesota. Second.
Motion made in second to approve a resolution consenting to continued initial resettlement of refugees. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. The information that was given to us addressed a meeting that was held on November 19th, where it states the commission unanimously supports that, however, we did not receive the minutes from that meeting, and I'm just wondering if they are available, that it could be shared with us, what the Human Rights Commission's thoughts were in doing this, because I think it was prior to the county's vote.
Council, city administrator Grammets.
Mr. Mayor and city council members, just want to note for the record that these minutes have not been approved, you know, by the Human Rights Commission, but they had been written up, and the motion basically was, after discussion of the draft resolution, the motion was made by Chair Huseby that the resolution be presented to the city council, subject to jurisdiction. Commissioner Engen seconded the motion, which passed. Now, they may, when they meet again, look at this and say, no, that was unanimous, and we want the minutes to reflect that, but the minute says, they currently read, just say the motion passed.
Okay. Councilmember Meskey.
I've thought of this quite a bit. The operative word in the expression of these minutes that have not been approved yet was "subject to jurisdiction." We have talked about this, and everybody who has spoken so far is absolutely correct. We did support it unanimously, but at the time, this thing has to be, it was a time of essence for this thing to be moving through the process. We did not know what entity would have that responsibility. We knew that the state of Minnesota, the governor would have to vote on it. If the governor did not vote on it, then we knew that the counties would vote on it, but the counties get to vote on it regardless, so we knew that that had to go to the county. But if the county didn't vote, then it would be left as a no vote, and Wilmer was going to chime in, that we wanted it to be a yes vote under the resolution that you're looking at currently. I will tell you that it was very political, I would even, this is my own two cents, we sat down before, and I had a model resolution, and there was some very political things in there that we stripped out, so it would be as apolitical as possible, because what we were looking for was a family-friendly resolution, where we were going to unite families, and so I strongly believe that as a, the city council should not be making resolutions about refugee resettlement. I believe that's the jurisdiction of the federal government, perhaps state government, but certainly not city government, but if a failure of all three of those entities to actually act, we were prepared to act. I don't know if acting now makes any sense, because once the jurisdiction has been defined, those jurisdictions have chimed in. Now, it would be just supporting those other entities. I will tell you that the ordinance, or not the ordinance, the resolution is before you, I would have brought this myself, had no entities moved this forward, because this is strictly talking about reuniting families, and I shouldn't have to, but I went to the United States State Department to look at refugee numbers, and I looked at, and the federal government set that threshold, 30,000 or 30,000, we had 10. Divided by the number of county jurisdictions, Caney County would get 9.5, which is right on where it was, and now, the federal government did reduce that to 13,000, 18,000, so I think our number would be six. I can proudly tell you that of all of those that came in 2019, were all reunited with families, which is at the heart of what our resolution was going to be here. I do not know, I know the county did act, I don't know what their wherestes are, but I know what their fores are the same. So I was sitting, I don't know if, just offering up a voice of support of what the county did is adequate, because I don't think voting is something that maybe is within our realm. We're definitely out of that jurisdiction, so we haven't seen the minutes yet either, because that was my recollection, and I am but one member that was sitting on there. There is a tape, we can go back and listen to it, but with the minutes not coming forward yet, because I would like to, when we go back to the Human Rights Commission, consult with the rest of the group, because, you know, I'm getting older, my recollection may not be as good as it used to be, but I do recall that we were looking to see what jurisdiction was going to happen, but we were definitely unanimous in supporting this resolution, and like I said, I would have proudly brought this here if it was within the spectrum of what the city council can do. I don't know if that sheds any light on the conversation, but those are my recollections.
In just a matter of process, generally, the minutes don't come to us prior to being approved by the board or commission that looks at them. It's unfortunate, I agree with Councilmember Nelson, that it would have been nice if we would have had those beforehand to review, but our process is to have the commission or board review them, approve them, then they come to us, and that's why you'll see some of our, you know, municipality, I mean, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Board made in of December 9th, as an example, so. Additional conversations. Councilmember Osmus.
Thank you. So, just for clarification, super clarification, the county passed their resolution that encompasses Wilmer, so it would be, in a sense, if you want to call it overkill, but, or just say it's in support of their resolution if we vote or pass on this. Correct?
Yeah. That's my understanding.
Okay.
They are the authorizing jurisdiction, as well as the state of Minnesota, and I think that that's happened at the governor's.
Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just substantively, how do we know whether or not we are or are not supporting the resolution that was passed at the county level if we don't know the exact contents of the resolution in comparison? Because I know that when the county was, when the issue came before the county, they were, at least according to some commissioners, that they were left with information late or delayed, not much time to review the actual information, so how do we differentiate exactly what we are or are not supporting?
I believe that what you would be supporting if you passed this resolution would be what is presented to you. It would not be contingent on what was presented to the county.
I believe that the bit resolved is the same, and I would imagine some of the wherestes are the same, but I do not know what the content of all the other wherestes were at the county level.
Okay. Councilmember Plowman.
Okay, follow-up question, if I may. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're all aware that this is a highly-charged, somewhat divisive issue in our community and across the United States, and that's just a fact. I'm wondering, and I'm just going to ask the hard questions, if nobody else will, I'm wondering why, if not necessary, why our municipality would put ourselves in the position of taking a vote on something, on any type of measure that may not be of any substance if there's an overriding jurisdiction, and therefore, if it is completely symbolic, why our local governance would take part in simply symbolic move in what I would consider a rather polarized political climate? I'm not quite sure why we would subject ourselves to that. Maybe somebody can help me understand, but for myself, that doesn't quite make sense.
Councilmember Ask.
I'd share your sentiment. I actually sent an email to a few folks earlier this week of whether or not we can even pull it off of the agenda for that very reason, and so I have mixed feelings about it, because I absolutely supported this, and it was, and I think the minutes, and I think the motion is absolutely correct. If it was our jurisdiction, I'll reiterate, I was going to bring this myself, because I think it has been stripped of the political-charged pieces around this topic. It focuses solely on family reunification, and I support that now, and I can, I could, if this was to actually, if we go to a vote on it, I'd vote for it, but every comment you just made is the absolute reason to not do it as well, because it's already been done. And so that is the crux of the argument, and I actually supported not having it on here this evening and waiting, because there is no rush, because the entities that needed to make the decision have done so in a timely fashion. If we'd like to extend that piece, I would like that to come after the Human Rights Commission has reevaluated the jurisdiction question, because that was in question at the time, and time- and time was of the essence when they first came. So, if it were to be delayed or taken back to the Human Rights Commission so they can reevaluate the question now, with jurisdiction being addressed, perhaps they wouldn't see it necessary either.
Councilmember Asmus.
Thank you. I, I believe it would be symbolic for us to go forward with this proposal now, but we did basically do that in, was it April, when we said that we were a welcoming community. So, I feel that we, that we have done that, and, and that the county now passed, even though we may not know the, the formal wherashes and what fours, but they have moved it forward to make this resettlement for refugees. So, I guess I don't, I don't see any purpose in going forward with a, with a vote on this either.
Additional discussion. I'm sorry. Councilmember Mesky.
Well, given the nature of what it is, I don't want to vote down a resolution that talks about being a welcoming resolution. I would prefer that if the makers of it feel the same sentiment, that we can attempt to remove it at this time, and perhaps take advice of tabling this until a further date. Because if I'm going to be torn, because I, I'm telling you, I believe in heart and soul everything in here, these wherashes, and I can't vote no on them.
Councilman Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I would agree with Mr. Mesky, it's not the actual substance of what we're talking about that I, that I somewhat take issue with or have difficulty with. It's the fact that I feel like we are being drug into a politically charged and, and polarized issue against our will, and if it's not necessary, I don't understand the need to take part. If, if somebody were to clarify that this is necessary for one reason over another, then my opinion would be completely changed, but like you said, with the substance therein, I, I agree with that also. And, and furthermore, to, to Ms. Osmus's point, the resolution, the welcoming resolution that, that we took, I voted in favor of, and I fully support the language of that as well. Have no problem with it whatsoever. What I don't like the feel of, I don't like the feel of being drug into a political issue. I do not believe that that is our purview as a local municipality unless specifically tasked with that item, and I don't believe we are being specifically tasked with that item. Therefore, I have a difficult time supporting it.
Additional discussion. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will admit that when I heard that this was going to be on the agenda, I wondered why we were addressing it when this was not a municipal issue. However, it is out there now, and it's been talked about in the, on the radio, in the public. Community members are waiting to hear what we have to say about this, and if we choose to not vote on this matter and let our voice be heard, others will just assume that we have a no vote and we do not support this particular resolution. So, I think for us to walk away from this today leaves people with the wrong impression, or at least it leaves me with an impression of not knowing what my co-council members really feel and what they really think about this. Do I really want to be in this position? No, but you know what? We are. This has been, like I said, there are certain things that, once they're put out, you can't really reel it back in and just pretend it didn't happen. That's just not the way it is. I think we need to address it and, and let our voices be heard.
Additional discussion. Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Wilmer, we have spoken earlier on with our welcoming statement, and I think that we've always been a welcoming community, and like Councilmember Schwante says, this is a decision that has been brought forward. I believe we have to follow through, and that's what we get elected for. So, I think it's on the table, it's something that we have to follow through on, and, and I'm, I'm excited about what Wilmer has to offer in his community and into the nation. We're, we're a leader, and we've got to set the, continue to set the standard. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor Calvin. It's hard not to agree with the wherashes, and maybe I'm just going to ask for a legal clarification when it gets to be it resolved. This document, they're talking about sending this document to the United States Department of State, and as was indicated, I think the jurisdiction is in question, and so I'm just asking for clarification of, is it necessary to, I mean, we've done, I agree that welcoming statement sets the stage for us, not suggesting we walk away from this, but I'm just curious with what kind of legal things we're talking about in the be it resolved.
Mr. Scott.
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Nelson, the whereas clauses, the recitals in this resolution simply provide context. They are not the operative language. The operative language is where it says be it resolved. The be it resolved language is responding to an executive order that President Trump signed earlier this year, and essentially, he set up a, or directed his executive branch to set up an opt-in program for participating in the refugee resettlement program. I have reviewed the executive order, it seems like it's ambiguous about which level of local governments need to act. I understand organizations that deal with this day in and day out and have sought that clarification, and must have received clarification that the county is the local government level that needs to opt in in order for the program to continue operation in that locality. So, that's the best I can tell you, that's my understanding, that the local government referred to in the executive order would be, in this case, the county.
Additional discussion. I'm sorry, did you get your question answered? Councilmember Nelson. Additional questions? Councilmember Nelson, continue.
Councilmember Mesky is serving on the Human Rights Commission, and I respect his opinion, and had asked him some questions about this before, and, and I'm just curious if we're ready. I don't want to walk away from this, but in light of how the Human Rights Commission did document it in their minutes, I'm wondering if it shouldn't just be sent back to them for review.
Councilmember Mesky.
Councilmember Davis is also on the Human Rights Commission. Again, I believe that the jurisdiction piece that was on there was the part of what was going to happen to this resolution. And with the legal opinion you just got, that that jurisdiction was the county, that answered the question, and in my opinion, we didn't need to address it this evening. However, if we push the issue and we're going to address it, I don't know what their wherashes were, but if they were the ones I originally seen, I would not have probably supported it. I support these wherashes, and if it's what we're talking about here is this, I can support this. I'd prefer not to have to do that, for a procedural reason only.
Additional discussion. All in favor of the res, sorry, we'll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Abstaining.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye. Can I comment?
No.
Okay. Aye.
Plowman.
No.
Nelson.
Aye.
Six ayes, one nay, and one abstain.
I believe the abstention would uphold in this case. Uh, legal counsel.
Sorry, Mayor, I'm not sure, what's the question?
Right, that's what you're saying, right? Conflict of interest or not? Or you just want to abstain?
I'm just abstaining.
Okay, that's fine. Councilmember Osmus, is there anything else you'd like to add?
I was just going to say, if we're, if we're having to vote on the resolution, you know, definitely I'm voting yes to reunify families, and so, that's, that would be the, the support of the yes vote.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, the resolution passes. The resolution to accept the grant and enter an agreement with Epitopee Infrastructure Extension. Mr. Aaron Backman, our EDC Director for the City of Wilmer and Caneywood County.
Mr. Members, and Mr. Mayor, and members of the City Council, tonight I'm going to be talking about a, a grant acceptance, and as well as a grant agreement related to the Epitopee Sewer Project. Epitopee produces veterinary vaccines for the agriculture sector. The parent company, Vaxenova, plans to accelerate Epitopee's growth and is prepared to invest over 15 million in Wilmer in capital investment and add 17 well-paying biotech jobs within Caneywood High County. To do that, they need to have adequate sewer service to the site, which is just outside the city limits. In late October, the EDC received word that the deed commissioner had approved the Innovative Business Development Public Infrastructure Grant with the City of Wilmer. The EDC had submitted a grant application on the city's behalf for the Epitopee Sewer Extension for $1.3 million. The city attorney, city staff, and EDC have reviewed the grant agreement. The final legal description does not have to be in Exhibit A. You should have, or if not, I have certainly copies of the grant agreement, it's lengthy. The city does have flexibility in adjusting the path of the sewer line, and I just distributed the latest version of the Epitopee's line, and as you can see, it goes south on 45th, turns 90 degrees, and goes on the north side of the new Highway 12. One difference from the last version that you may have seen is that it is in the MinDOT right-of-way. And we've had various discussions, I would say that City Attorney Robert Scott has had a number of discussions with MinDOT, as well as other organizations, and can speak to some of those items. The route is, is important, because obviously, you have to get it in a good progression in terms of how it flows. At this point, the grant is solely for the sanitary sewer. There is not a match on the city side, which is unusual, but that's a positive for the City of Wilmer. The match, in this case, is the corporate investment, and with me tonight are two Epitopee's individuals, Brian Harberts, who is the CFO, and Mitch Schuler, who is the manager, plant manager. So, if you have any additional questions for the Epitopee's people or for the attorney, Robert Scott, we would be happy to try to answer any questions that you might have.
Council, what are your wishes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Those are made in seconds, approve a resolution entering into a grant in an agreement with Epitopee for infrastructure extension. Discussion. Councilmember Osmus.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to reiterate and thank you for all your work on this. It was huge for the city, and like you said, the city did not have to have a match to make this happen. This is going to allow Epitopee to expand, and it's just all-around a win, and I just really want to thank you for all your work and efforts towards this.
Thank you.
Councilman Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, second that, everything Councilwoman Osmus said, and I think it also goes to note, I had a couple of people actually ask me about this, thinking that this is, that this was a piece of infrastructure that would service only one facility, and I, I think we can all proudly say that this is going to service multiple facilities that have been staples, economic staples in Wilmer, and not only that, it's going to help facilitate future development if we're thinking five, 10, 15 years down the road in terms of economic development to the south of the realigned Highway 12. I think it's going to be only a plus for that future development. So, again, great work, and this should lead to even, even better things for development on the west side of Wilmer. Thank you.
Councilmember Mesky.
I'll thank you as well, but I also really want to thank Epitopee for calling Wilmer home. Appreciate it, and this probably assures many, many, many years in the future, and probably some wonderful expansion and ungreat things in the future, so thank you.
Mr. Mayor, a couple of things. Just again, so you're aware, the corporate offices for Epitopee are on the Midwest Technology Campus, and what we're talking about is a sanitary sewer line that connects with the production facility, which is on the west side. I would like to add that as part of the innovative grant program, it's for, it's intended for innovative businesses. There are other businesses in the general vicinity that are, I believe, are innovative, and so that's, that's the match that we try to do here. And any, if you have any other questions, I don't know if, 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 Robert, you'd have any additional comments that you would want to make in terms of your discussions with MMB and MinDOT.
Sure, thank you. Mayor, as members of the council, the grant agreement in your packet is a fairly standard agreement the state uses whenever they issue a large grant to cities like this. I reviewed it, the language is to be expected and acceptable. The piece that's still out there is obviously, as Aaron mentioned, determining the exact route of this pipeline. The current thinking from city staff is that it would be ideal for that to be located within the MinDOT new right-of-way for Highway 12. I have had conversations with MinDOT, broaching that subject. Whether the entirety of that length can be in the right-of-way or not, we don't know yet, but those conversations will continue. And Aaron, Aaron's point about the legal description in this grant agreement, that's not ready to be finalized yet, because we don't have the final location. So, there are still some very fundamental issues with this project to be worked out with the various parties, but at this point, there's no reason the city can't proceed to approve the grant, approve signatures on this grant agreement, understanding that there, there's a little bit of work left to finalize the document.
Thank you. Aaron, when is a target date for this to start to proceed? Do you have an idea?
Well, of course, I would like it yesterday, but in reality, we're talking 2020. Obviously, with the way the weather is right now, we would be fortunate if we can be underway next year. The, the grant, if you'll notice in the grant agreement, speaks to having everything completed by 2022 in terms of the, the projects, but obviously, Epitopee can't make that investment unless they have assurance that they are going to have a city utility to the site. So, I would, I personally would like to see progress made in next year.
So, you're thinking like spring possibly, or, or is it too hard to estimate, or?
Well, hopefully, we can see some progress in second quarter of 2020, but we'll, we'll see where, where we end up.
Okay. Well, to echo everybody else's sentiment, we appreciate your work, Epitopee's participation and, and what they're bringing to the table. We appreciate all that. That's just nothing but good news for us.
Great, thank you.
Additional comments? Also, Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question, if there's a bump in the road and there's some change orders, who pays for them then?
Right. So, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Fagerly, we feel that there is a, a sufficient amount in the grant to cover the costs for the project. Bolton and Mink has done the analysis. It's, it's reasonably straightforward in terms of the route. You don't know until you are going through the process if there's any surprises, but in, in talking with the engineers and so forth, I think that there is sufficient funds within the grant to undertake the project. If you're doing $80, $100 a foot, linear foot, and you're going 6,400 feet, you can kind of do the math as to what. kind of do the math as to what that might run. And so we've, we've tried to have enough contingencies in there to handle the project. But until you get into it, construction, you don't always know.
Another job well done. Thanks.
Thank you.
Again, I'd like to thank Epitope for the work that you're doing here in Wilmer. The visionary processes that you were doing, adding new additional jobs is to be commended. I know you're looking at a $20 million expansion out there within the upcoming years, and that will be a good addition to Wilmer as well. So we thank you for your investment in Wilmer. And to Aaron, we continue to give you accolades, and with projects like these, they will continue. All right. So we appreciate that. Counsel, ready to vote? Roll call.
Counselmember Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Elverado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Laumann.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Edi, Zironis.
That resolution passes. I would like to take some mayoral privilege and move item number 14 up to this item. We have two members of the public that are here, and rather than them having to sit through our committee meetings, if it's okay with counsel, I would like to take privilege and move that up. Is there any opposition to that? We'll go ahead and move item number 14 forward. Mr. Baumgartner, our City Park and Rec Director. Resolution to execute a license agreement for use of Robins Island for the holiday light display.
Good evening, Mayor, member of the council. Tonight before you is a resolution to accept an agreement that we have with Wilmer Fest for Celebrate the Lights of the World Display at Robins Island. We all know that this is the second year of it. We found out early last week that it was only a one-year lease agreement, and so we've talked to Attorney Robert Scott and with the Wilmer Fest Committee to redraft a new agreement that's going to be a renewing contract with the 30-day notice of dismissal. So also, we are paying for the lights that are out there, and it's roughly about $150 to $175 for electrical use out there.
Counsel, what are your wishes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Was made and seconded to approve a resolution to execute, execute a license agreement for use of Robins Island for holiday light displays. Discussion. I see we have Mr. James Miller. Did you wish to make a comment?
Well, I'll comment, Mayor Kelvin, and members of the council, on the not paying our electrical bill. If we receive an invoice, we'll pay it. But we, we do appreciate the opportunity to be out there. Obviously, this is a light display last year that helped us raise about $92,000. That went back to our, our local Salvation Army to help people in the community. This year, we branched it out to help four-area nonprofits, including the Salvation Army, the Candyway County Food Shell, the Link in New London, and Habitat for Humanity West Central Minnesota, who are helping people with what we consider basic needs within the community. So really doing some good work, and again, we're thankful for the opportunity to be out there and to not only show off the lights, but to show off Robins Island as a huge asset within our community.
Thank you. Counselmember Elverado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to give a shout out to Mr. Kubish, Scott Kubish. He's the electrical wizard that works on those lights and, and makes magic out there with those, with those lights. So I believe they're P-10 lights out there?
RGB lights.
RGB lights. They're amazing what, what, what they do, and it's his creativity, his drive to make that happen. He's put in countless hours, and thank you very much, Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselmember Mesky.
Since I have you here, a couple of questions. How, how is traffic going out there? If people have any suggestions, I can still recall when it was at its former location, loving to see those movies and things like that. Anything that, getting some ideas and things like that for that display?
Counselmember Mesky, we've had lots of questions about the movies, and, and with the, the construction going on this year, we tabled a lot of that because of that. We, we lost a pretty good section of parking where we were able to host that. We also did not have Santa and Mrs. Claus back this year, simply because of the traffic pattern with the new construction gone there. But we'll, we'll hopefully be able to use the brand-new beautiful shelter next year.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Yeah, definitely. We're, we're excited to be able to do that. And, you know, you mentioned traffic. The traffic has been good. We are very blessed, and, and, you know, Gary Manzer and the Public Works Department are absolutely wonderful to help us out to keep, to keep things open. You know, there's always challenges when you have rain and, and drizzle and, and snow, but we've had very good traffic, and it's just great to see the families. I stood out there Saturday night. It was five degrees below zero. We had a roaring fire and just a great number of cars coming through that, that had a chance to see the lights, and that's the exciting part about it.
I've heard nothing but good things, and, and it's, it's improved, and I suspect every year it will continue to improve. So I mean, people that maybe went last year and think, I went and saw it last year, I would encourage you to go check it out again because it's actually, it's different and it's getting better every year. So thank you.
As long as we have, like Counselmember Elverado mentioned, guys like Scott and, and Mr. Chad Kuzman back to help out, as well as John Schpin, all the other volunteers that have been out there, and it, it is a volunteer-driven project to, to put everything up and to come up with some new things to show off and, and new technologies to be able to use, whether all the different acronyms of RGB and LED and whatnot. But again, it's, it's really about just showing off that great asset of our community.
Counselor Osmus, follow away. Counselmember Schwantes.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to shout out to also Chad Kuzman is in the audience, and this, this wasn't even possible without his vision and his generosity, his family's generosity, and we are so indebted to their family, and it is fabulous. And it's, we're just, we are blessed to have this in Wilmer and for them to have donated it to the, to be able to be put out at Robins Island and for the Wilmer Fest Group for taking over. I mean, it is a, it is just a fabulous addition to the city.
Thank you. Counselmember Schwantes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I echo what has been said. I am wondering, Mr. Miller, if you have enough bell ringers, and if not, how one might go about volunteering to do that.
Mayor Kelvin, do I need to pay off the council member for, for throwing that out there for me?
Put it to the Salvation Army.
There you go.
Very good. Members of the council, Counselmember Schwantes, yes, we would love to have some more volunteers. That's always the challenge and always the struggle to get more people to come out and help out. The weather looks absolutely fabulous this week, so if you wanted to help out, this would be a great opportunity. We have, we have signups both on our website and on our Facebook page to come on out and be part of it, and, and we set everything up for you. We get the fire going, and we just ask you to sit out there and, and have fun and welcome people and thank them for coming out.
Counselmember Elverado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize for not recognizing Mr. Kuzman. I'm sorry. We do appreciate everything you've been doing out there, your, your team, your constantly out there, your energy. Thank you very much. We greatly appreciate it. It's, it's a diamond, and people like to come and see that diamond, so thank you very much.
Okay, I think we're ready to vote. Roll call.
Counselmember Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Elverado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Laumann.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Edi, Zironis.
Resolution passes. Next, we'll go to Public Works Safety Committee report for December 4th. Counselor Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Works and Safety Committee met December 4th at 5:15 at the City Office Building. Members present were myself, councilmembers Osmus, Nelson, and Elverado. We were joined by our Public Works Director, Mr. Christensen, our Police Chief Felton, Fire Chief Hanson, our Public Works Superintendent, Mr. Manzer, and our Engineering Administrative Assistant, Ms. Del Bosque. We called the meeting to order at 5:20. The first item we discussed were public safety statistics. We always take note of the various statistics year over year. There are ebbs and flows in different areas, but there was nothing atypical of either one of these reports that, that was noted. They are attached to your minutes, so now would be the time if you have questions for either chief. Hearing none, we will move on to the next item that we discussed, and that would be tow bids. The current City of Wilmer tow contract is set to expire at the end of 2019. Big quote specifications were advertised and sent to local tow agencies with the due date of November 13th. Two companies bid on a two-year contract, including years 2020 and 2021. The low bid company was Ed's Service Center of Wilmer. The big quote for 2021 was substantially lower than the previous contract and their supporting documentation on your minutes here, equating to lower fees paid by the city for toes. Wilmer Police Department handles the administrative portion of towing vehicles along with management of the city impound lot. The 2018 and 19 administrative fee was $67.23 to $68.21 in addition to the tow fee. If the 2020 and 21 tow contract is approved, Wilmer Police Department would like to adjust the administrative fee to $69.34, so the total fee to be collected, including tax, would be an even, an even $80 per vehicle. The even $80 per vehicle assists staff, as only cash is accepted after hours for tow fees, and officers don't have access to change during that time. The 2018 and 19 tow fee was higher than the 2020 and 2021 bid, and although the administrative fee increases less than $1, we're able to pass along substantial savings to the citizens who have had their vehicles towed. So a motion was made and seconded to accept the 2020 and 2021 tow bid and award that bid to Ed's Service Center of Wilmer, and I will enter that now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve a tow bid. Is this a resolution? My computer's not being friendly to me. Is this a resolution or a simple motion?
It said information, but...
Oh, for information only? Oh, okay. I thought it was a motion made and seconded.
Could we ask our city administrator for, or either, yeah, our city administrator for clarification on the action that should be taken here?
Yeah, I believe it's for information only. Given the very small amount of the actual bid, it fell well under what a department head could authorize. So that was, it was processed through, so it was just information to the Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Yeah, we did, we did note that, and we double-checked it and triple-checked it, and probably blinked our eyes and quadruple-checked it to make sure that the numbers were actually correct. And being that as it was, we took it for information but decided to pass it along.
Would the motioner and seconder wish to rescind their motions?
I, I would.
Sure.
Motion and second has been rescinded. Counselmember Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next item up for discussion was a Minnesota BCA Joint Powers Agreement Regarding Human Trafficking Investigators Task Force, and this is a... The Wilmer Police Department is charged with the investigation of various crimes, including human trafficking and sexual exploitation of children. The Minnesota Bureau of Criminal Apprehension, or BCA, rather, has created the Minnesota Human Trafficking Investigators Task Force and is offering affiliate memberships through a joint powers agreement. This agreement would allow local investigators to attend specialized BCA training, the ability to borrow specialized equipment, access to BCA investigator assistance, and some reimbursement of personnel and equipment costs for these types of investigations. The BCA will occasionally request assistance from agencies with joint powers agreements, but it is non-obligatory. The joint powers agreement of this type would potentially allow access to equipment at no or substantially reduced cost that Wilmer Police Department would otherwise have to fund individually. This agreement would also allow some reimbursement for investigations of this type. And a motion was made and seconded to allow application to the BCA Joint Powers Agreement, and I will make that motion now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to enter a resolution for a joint powers agreement with the Minnesota BCA. Discussion. Roll call.
Counselmember Davis.
Aye.
Elverado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Laumann.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Edi, Zironis.
That resolution passes. Counselor Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next agenda item that we had was regarding ordinance regarding massage parlors local to the City of Wilmer. This is a request for the City of Wilmer to research and potentially implement an ordinance to regulate massage businesses and services to the public. A sample ordinance comprised elements from the Blaine and Wade Park ordinances are included and should be included here as well. The goal of the massage parlor ordinance would be to protect businesses that are operating legitimate establishments and ensure cleanliness, safety, prevent criminal activity, and ensure the general welfare of the community with regard to this business type. The City of Wilmer recently has had massage businesses that have generated complaints and concerns from the public over articles described above. The Minnesota Legislature has not yet acted on a statewide standard or statute, and no potential timeline is available for those actions. Therefore, the Wilmer Police Department has spoken with various massage therapists and massage therapy educators regarding an ordinance, and there's been support to do so to further protect those legitimate businesses and the therapists who work in them. The request was made that the council direct the Wilmer City Attorney to draft an ordinance for consideration, and we have the sample. A motion was made and seconded for that ordinance to be drafted, and I will enter that motion now.
Second.
Was made, has been made and seconded to approve a motion to draft the massage parlor ordinance within the City of Wilmer. Discussion. Counselmember Mesky.
This is just a draft. We are, we will look at the final ordinance at some future date. That's the idea?
That is my understanding. Our legal counsel could confirm that, if he would.
Mayor, members of the council, I understand the ordinance to direct our office to prepare a draft to bring back the council for consideration. I understand the draft or the material in your packet is gathered by staff, which is very helpful, actually, but we'll look at that as examples of what other cities have done and take that into consideration in putting our draft together.
Are there other businesses that are identified as businesses that are in a position where we have to have ordinances to regulate them?
I believe that question would best be directed to our city administrator, who may defer to our police chief.
Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers, I agree.
Tag, I'm it. I, I know there are ordinances that cover, you know, obviously, the, the sale of alcohol and tobacco and those type of things, even cafes and the theaters. Taxi cab companies require a license and requirements regarding insurance and hours of operation and that type of thing. So I feel that this would generally fall into some of those, or be similar in some of those categories.
Additional comments or questions? I'm sure most people on the council for sure know, but the, the new individual that was hired by Youth for Christ has spent the last two years traveling the country, speaking specifically to this issue. And I had dinner with him last week, and I think it certainly would be something that maybe the police chief could reach out to Sean and talk with him in regards to that. I know there are specific things that we want to address when looking at these, and a lot of city ordinances are not written correctly, and he has a lot of opinions and a lot of expertise, so maybe that might be something that we could run it by him. I think he was going to try going out and looking at the ordinance before tonight, but I'm not sure. Just moving to town, he's been quite busy, so maybe we could reach out to Sean and see if he's got some advice on that, if that's okay with the council. We have a motion on the table for consideration of the draft massage ordinance. All in favor, the motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry. Counselor Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next item that we had discussed, excuse me, was Robins Island Four Seasons Shelter Change Order Number One. Ram General Contracting was awarded the Robins Island Four Seasons Shelter Construction Project at the August 19th council meeting. Construction began in September for the 3,100-square-foot building, including a community room and public restrooms. Change Order Number One resulted from labor and material for water main pipe and service changes to switch the sizing from 2.5 inches to 4 inches, as well as moving the location of the service due to groundwater infiltration, adding outlets for sink and flush valves, upgrading the steel roof color to copper in order to match it to our new Rice Park Shelter, and also adding additional erosion control per the MPCA. The total for these change, the changes and increases the contract amount by $23,083.27. The base bid, just to let you know the financial impact of it, the base bid with alternates of the polished concrete floor, air conditioning, spray foam insulation was awarded to Ram General Contracting in the amount of $925,152. The addition of Change Order Number One brings the total contract price to $900... The addition of Change Order Number One brings the total contract price to nine-hundred-forty-eight-thousand-two-hundred-thirty-five dollars twenty-seven cents, and will be funded from the budgeted contingency amount, and we're under the understanding that that project is still within budget. And I will make the motion to approve Change Order Number One now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve Change Order Number One for work at Robins Island Four-Season Shelter. Discussion. Councilmember Schwantes.
Thank you. Part of that change order is to upgrade the roof color to copper. Can someone tell us what color it is now and why we are changing it, other than the information indicated it was to match the roof of the other building?
I would defer to administration or to public works. Actually, Park and Rec, rather.
Mr. Ramets, or do you want to...
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and city council members, as you see in your council packet, there is a listing of all the different change orders, and one of them was a little over two thousand dollars for the increase due to the color. And I've been here, you know, long enough to have heard the request that the roof match an existing park shelter roof for consistency, and obviously, that was not included in the base bid. A color was, but not that color, and so when that change was made, that actually ended up being an upcharge, because it's not a standard color. And if I'm incorrect on that, city engineer or Park and Rec Director can chime in.
Mr. Mayor and council, I would just say that I believe that those of us on the Public Works Committee, we, at least it was my impression, and it was discussed, that that was, we wanted continuity within our buildings, because we know that the Rice Park shelter looks great. I guess, at least at the committee level, we all agreed that that looked great, and that that was the direction we were going to proceed. I'm not going to throw anybody under the bus for making a mistake, because I'm not exactly sure who exactly I would even throw under the bus for that, but...
Tell me what the heck.
Whomever. And it might have been an oversight of mine. If it was, I apologize, but the question was asked, and it was discussed, and I do believe that we were believing that that was the color that we were after, and we were bidding out a colored roof. I think what may have been an unknown, and I may be incorrect in this, but this is just my assumption, is that although we were bidding a colored roof, we did not know that this particular color had an additional upcharge. And so if that was an oversight of mine or of our committees, I'll take ownership of that, but that is the case that I believe it might be.
Councilmember Schwantes.
So then, does that mean we do not know what color we are leaving to go to the gold color? We don't know if it's red or green or whatever? I'll be honest with you, two-thousand-four-hundred-twenty-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents to change the color of the roof to match a building that is across town doesn't make any sense to me, especially when we don't know what color we are leaving. I have a hard time imagining green would not be acceptable there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe it was discussed that, moving forward, we are going to be doing additional building works and whatnot, and it has been discussed at some level that we are looking for a level of continuity when it comes to the exterior facades of these buildings, and I know that with future buildings coming, a lot of cities do try to find that continuity and exterior appearance. With regard to the question that's asked whether or not we are actually leaving a color or whether or not there was another color, maybe it was a similar color or whatnot, that I do not know. I would have to defer to the individuals specifically involved with that project as to whether or not we are leaving another color, if there was some other completely different color bid out. I was under the impression that it was going to be a matching color.
Mr. Mayor and city council members, I would, I've seen enough of these construction projects to know that, that there's a standard slate of colors. It'll be your hunter green, or your brick red, or whatever those colors are, but there's, let's say there's six of them, and once you deviate from that particular color palette that is standard, any change would cost you more. So, at this point, it was just a painted roof, and it could have been one of six or seven colors. All we had to do was pick it out, and it wouldn't have cost us anything. But because we wanted a specific color, that's the upcharge. You see this in automobiles all the time. They come in these colors. You want the fiery red one, you pay an extra six hundred dollars for it, you know? So this is not unusual, it's just that I think it was something that, I think, we, as a community, said we wanted to have this color to match, and I think the documentation didn't coordinate with that fact, the actual bidding documents didn't. You know, I, that would be my understanding of the situation, so if you want that color, you would have to pay an upcharge.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, discussion was had too regarding other colors, and I guess the committee, if I recall correctly, somebody from the committee can correct me if I'm wrong, but we did not necessarily want to be arbitrarily picking colors, because that would almost feel as though it was kind of micromanaging to us, and so we kind of thought going with that continuity color palette on the exterior of our new Parker Rec buildings would be something, and it was advised to us through staffs that that may be a good, a good move, whether or not there was going to be an extra charge regarded, regarding that. I was unaware of that until now, but we deemed it to be acceptable.
You know, I'm just going to speak to it. I mean, we're talking one building, I think the number was twenty-four hundred dollars. You know, I think they're looking at probably four or five additional buildings at least out at Robins Island, so you have to multiply this times four or five, and then we're looking at other city buildings that are being built currently, so you multiply it by that. So, if we're going with that same analogy that we're going to match the colors, this isn't a one-time cost, this is a ongoing cost of continued buildings down the road, and we're going to have an additional cost. Of course, we'll probably build contingencies in those, and we'll spend all that contingency too, because we spend contingencies. That's what we do.
To be fair, we saw a fit to pay the upcharge on the Rice Park shelter.
Correct. Councilmember Nelson.
I think the intent when we went to a metal roof, the conversation was to match Rice Park, and so I'm not sure that we realized there was going to be an upcharge, but I do think matching that building is the right thing to do. That is a statement, and this one will be one also, and I think it's important that we follow through on that color.
Can we buy a bunch of this paint and just provide it when we get the contract? I feel like we are getting a little in the weeds on colors, and we'll buy extra and put it on all the roofs. I, I think maybe it might be time with all these park projects, and when we keep talking, we got new signage, and we go, we want the signage to match, and now we're going to match the paint colors, let's put some of this down in writing, so when we do a contract, we say, these are the things that we expect. This is what our signage is going to look like, this is what the paint's going to look like, and if it's a unique paint that costs too much money, let's buy a bunch of it and have it here, and we can do it when we unveil these projects. I don't understand, we're getting into some minutia here, this is a problem we can solve, and if we need to start documenting these standards for all the parks, we can just roll it out, I think that might be very helpful, so we're not here at the next project, at the next one.
A motion made and seconded. I have a question in regards to the water main size, and again, you might think this is getting into minutia as well, but the local option sales tax has funding for the water line in it as well, and having been a person that's worked in the water a lot, I can almost guarantee you that four-inch line is going to get reduced down to an inch, maybe an inch and a quarter, inch and a half, and so, you know, we can say this is micromanaging, we can say this is getting down in the details, but, you know, I don't know. I mean, it just seems like we're trying to spend the contingency to make sure that we spend the contingency. That's the way it looks to me.
Do you think we could get some comments from our city engineer regarding water size?
Yeah.
All right.
Mayor, members of the council, as far as the water size goes, originally bid out as a two-and-a-half inch, and that was to supply the amount of water needed for the automatic toilets, automatic faucets. Upon timing and bidding of that project, it sounds like a two-and-a-half inch is not a common size any longer, although it used to be, so that's why they upsized it to four. Along with that, because my original thought was we'll just go down to two, that that would be enough, it'd be more than enough, but by upsizing it to four, it has more than enough water capacity to, for all the automatic toilets probably to go at the same time, as well as we're extending beyond this building to other parts of the park and to other new buildings for water service. And so, this four inch is basically the service, whereas the water line is being put in with the rest of the, with some other sales tax funds will be in, probably an eight inch, comes from the other side of the park.
Councilmember Osmos.
Thank you, Mayor. In all fairness, I don't think anybody's trying to spend the contingency. My understanding from the discussion we had on this is that the present pipes were really old, and so anytime that you get into remodeling or doing any kind of a project, it's like, now is the time. So, now is the time to improve the size of those, and the adequate size was a four inch. Same thing with the color. We were under the impression that we were bidding the same color, as was Rice Park, we wanted the same building, the same look. That was the thought process going forward, and just like Councilmember Plowman said, I don't think anybody knows where in the process of the bidding that that color did not get stated, but that would be the color that we would like to see on there. That's what was agreed upon, and everybody thought that would look the best, and that's just the Change Order Number One that came with the shelter.
And I just want to make it clear that I am not saying that our city staff or the council want to spend the contingency. If that was construed, that that's what I was inferring, that was not at all what I was, what I was attempting to say. I have bid a number of projects in my career, and I know firsthand that when you have contingencies, the vendor comes back to try to capture those. I think our staff is very reliable, I think our staff has done a good job, and I believe the council has as well. It's just that these things are presented to us, so I was not being disparaging to council and/or staff, if that was the assumption. That was not the intent. Additional comments or questions? Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We, too, had frustrations in the committee when we were discussing this. We believed that we had asked for a certain color, we were expecting a certain color on the roof, we thought it was taken care of, like the chairman said, for the committee. We don't know where it went wrong, we don't know how it went wrong, but it, it went wrong. We determined that as a, as a committee, that we wanted consistency for the City of Wilmer, we wanted it to look like Rice Park, and so we made the decision, with the trust of the council, to make that decision, and we made the decision to proceed with matching roof color. We also saw the future of the park, and we believe that we're going to need the water capacity for other buildings, so we believe that that was the right way to go. So, was this made lightly? No. Was there discussion? Yes. But we agree with Mr. Maskey that there are certain parameters that we should include, and they should be standardized, and if, if we want the same colored roof, hopefully we can get a discount because of quantity. I don't know, but we want that in there, and we don't want, we don't want surprises. Nobody wants surprises, so it was a lively discussion, and we did, we did address it. Thank you.
So, knowing that, that helps as well, because then if there are concerns of the other four council members and the mayor, maybe those are understandable, if you had those discussions as well, because we were not in those discussions.
Correct.
So we have a motion that's been made and seconded to approve a resolution for Change Order Number One at Robins Island. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmos?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Maskey?
Aye.
Schwantes?
No.
Davis?
Aye.
Seven eyes, one knee.
Resolution passes. Next, I'm sorry, Councilmember Palmer.
Yeah, I still have a few more, thanks, Mr. Mayor. We'll see if I can get through. As required by state statute, a report is required for the 2020 street and other improvements. The report is to contain the boundaries of the area of improvements, the estimated cost, the total amount payable from special assessments, and the total amount of bonds the city intends to issue. The report will indicate the financial burden the city will need to assume in terms of the demand upon money in the general fund and the impact of the city's borrowing capacity. The list of streets and other proposed projects for 2020 has been prepared. The city council is required to order the preparation of the improvements report explaining the proposed improvements as well as the estimated costs. Sources of funding for the 2020 improvement projects includes money, monies from the Wilmer Municipal Utilities, assessments, federal and state aid funds, and bond proceeds. And I will make a motion to order the 2020 improvement report now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmos?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Maskey?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Eight eyes, zero knees.
Resolution passes. Councilmember Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our final item of discussion is regarding a snow emergency, and it's titled on here, "Snow Emergency Ordinance," but I do not believe that we're actually speaking with regards to the ordinance. Currently, snow emergencies are issued for the City of Wilmer in the Central Business District to clean and haul out snow, and it started understanding after significant or deemed significant events. The area affected is from First Street to Seventh Street Southwest and from Trot Avenue to the bypass. Citizens can use city parking lots to park cars normally parked on the streets in this area. The snow emergency runs from ten PM to six AM the following morning, and any vehicles left on the streets will be towed at the owner's expense. The news release for the event is typically published on social media, announced in the area radio stations, and also in the US Central Tribune. Signs are also placed on barrels throughout the downtown area as well to notify citizens and move their cars before ten PM that night. With that said, we have been exploring the idea of potentially being able to declare a snow emergency for the City of Wilmer and everything that entails, and it is by no means a simple process figuring out exactly how to do that. There are all kinds of variables and factors to be considered, and we have run the gamut of different scenarios and potential fixes, as well as setbacks, some difficulties that may lie in the way. In addressing this, I believe we've taken the time to reach out for legal consult regarding our ability to declare a snow emergency citywide without the creation of a new ordinance. We have discussed the different technological components that would aid us in implementing this and educating the public as to how this would occur, and staff has put a great deal of research into these different items, and then we've also discussed, along with the outreach, the actual implementation of the plan, and we had lengthy, lengthy discussion. This was probably an item that we have spent the most collaborative time on with all of our past public works meetings, discussing the exact, the actual hows, whats, wheres, whens, and those various components of how that would happen. We believe that it would not necessarily be in the best interest for the council to dictate exactly how this is going to happen, because council members are not the ones plowing the streets, we're not the ones towing the vehicles, we are not... ones plowing the streets, uh, we're not the ones towing the vehicles, we are not the ones, um, having to make all these different assessments on the fly of small, snow emergency events, or what could potentially be snow emergency events. Therefore, we are relying on staff, um, to help craft this policy. And, uh, I had also taken time to meet, uh, with representatives, with our, uh, with our, uh, engineering director, um, our public works director, as well as our public works, uh, superintendent that oversees all of the plowing, as well as, uh, uh, law enforcement. Our captain did join us as well for the discussion of this, so that we could get all ideas, uh, thoughts and concerns out on the table. And we do believe that we have, um, a potential plan, uh, in the works. Now, to discuss the actual, um, details of this plan, and maybe we can kind of start with the, with the legal, uh, the legal portion, and then move on to the technologic, uh, the technology, uh, that we've been discussing, and then we'll finally, uh, finish with the implementation, what exactly, um, we plan to do, how and when. And, uh, for that, uh, if possible, if we can call on our public works director, um, to guide us through this process, that would be appreciated.
Mayor, members of the council, uh, thank you, councilmember Plowman. Upon starting this process or this conversation, we were, um, told after research done by attorney Scott, that the ordinance we have in place and the policy we have in place is sufficient for what we were trying to do. We don't need a new ordinance, we don't need a new resolution to, um, do exactly what, uh, we're describing here. Unless we want to divide the town into sections, or do an odd even address type situation, or a north, south, east, west type situation, then, uh, we'll need to go back through the resolution process and, or the, the ordinance process and, and tweak that existing ordinance. As it stands right now, the ordinance is in place that allows the city to declare a snow emergency, um, and we have been doing that, as, uh, councilmember Plowman started. We have been doing that for the Central Business District only at this point. Most people are aware, if you're watching, uh, you know, during snow events or large snow events, you see at the bottom of the news, and it's got snow emergencies declared in certain towns across the, across the state. We've gathered some of that information, we've gathered some of their different codes and, and, uh, policies, and the bottom line is what we'd like to try to do is, if we declare a snow emergency, um, over the entire town, is ultimately not allow any parking on any city street until those streets are cleared. And that's what it boils down to. Now, getting to that point has become the, the point of, of, of quite a, quite a bit of discussion. So if you're one of the people that needs to move your car, you might only have to move it for 30 minutes if you're, happen to be on a street that gets plowed first. You might have to move it for four to six hours until your street gets cleared. But the bottom line is to get those, the cars off of the street until the plows and the drivers have had a chance to get through and get all, get the snow off of the street from curb to curb. What we don't want to do for the safety of the public, um, is get into a situation that we did last year, where we had back-to-back large snow events at the end of the year, and end up with a few streets in town that, uh, you'd be hard pressed to get, uh, the fire department down those streets without damaging cars or, or structures. Um, our own structures or the public cars. So we'd like to keep the streets clear, we'd like to keep them clear for safety, the traveling public, we'd like to keep them clear for the safety of our guys, and, uh, you know, there's, uh, accidents happen. We tangle unfortunately with a, with a, a few cars a year. When, when we're trying to plow around them, they're either, um, harder to see, the, the plows and the trucks are getting, you know, with the wings on them are, are hard to, hard to maneuver sometimes, and sometimes getting around those vehicles are, are difficult at best. Um, then what happens is they get plowed around, and the wind drill around your car, um, you can't get out, you get, people get stuck, they'll call, uh, Public Works and ask them to come back and clear them out, or after they've been moved. So we've got some, some issues we try to, we'd like to take care of in, in one, uh, one fell swoop here. That being said, legality, I think we're, we're good to go the way we, the way we are. Um, what we have been doing, we just need to expand that. We've looked into some software that, uh, the city can participate in. The, uh, PD and sheriff office already does this to, to an extent, as far as being able to notify citywide, um, people on, on different emergencies. The software we've looked at, we've had a couple presentations on, we'd like to, we'd, we'd like to get in, get into that situation where we can not only notify the general public of, of snow emergencies, but, but also, um, not everyday things, but, but different types of city, city functions. So maybe we have, um, we have a, uh, something going on at the, the brush site we want to let everybody know about, or we have, um, it's not going to be a, what we don't want to happen is to have it be a, you know, little, little, little Sally's, you know, birthday party, come join us, but it's not going to be something like that. It's, it's, it's city business. Um, we'd like to start with this emergency, snow emergency type thing, and, and get everybody as much notice as we can. That coupled with our already, um, fairly well-known social media with Facebook and Twitter, um, between, uh, between Public Works and PD and the city in general, has, we've got three, at least three different accounts that we can, we can make, we can get some, some notification out there. This, uh, software we looked at has, has the opportunity to contact, immediate, uh, automatically contact the newspaper and the radio, so that we can have, so that we can have those, uh, types of information outlets available as well. Um, as far as, as far as, uh, actually getting the snow removed, the guys have been very good with the, let's say, if there is such a thing as a standard significant snowfall, you know, not 18 inches to two feet, but in the, you know, four to eight inch range, we can, uh, cover the entire town in less than an eight-hour day. And so, um, most recently, we've been starting at about 4:00 AM, and so by noon, most, you know, most of the town, if not all of the town, is, is completely covered. And so, logistically, if we can get cars removed and get this actually to happen the way we're envisioning that could happen, the, uh, all the streets in town could be plowed curb to curb by noon on the day that we call the, we call the, the snow emergency. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. I rambled a little bit, sorry about that. I would stand for any questions. Um, Gary's here, if he's got any question, if you've got any questions specifically to the plow drivers and the 20-plus trucks and vehicles we have on the, on the road trying to get rid of the snow at the same time, um, to routes. Uh, he counted cars last time, I mean, he went to that level of, of research after we did a, a s- a snow event, so, um, stand for any questions or, or concerns you might have at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, before we get into discussion, I would just like to offer this preamble. Um, there's a reason that this is not a already crafted policy by our committee, and that is because there's so many different facets, um, that are beyond the scope of expertise by those on our committee, and we're, we are heavily relying on city staff for that expertise. And beyond that, then, that was something that, um, once staff is able to wrap their arms around this issue, bring us back the information, their thoughts and suggestions and whatnot, it was something that we didn't necessarily want to, um, uh, take and whittle away at, at the committee level. We thought it was a council-level idea, because it's a big thing. Uh, we are aware that there are challenges, we are very aware that it is a, uh, that it's a big, it's a big leap, it's a big policy. Um, and it's not going to be without, um, some, some trial and error, but a lot of thought has been, at least in our discussions at the committee level and with, uh, various staff members, um, and, you know, whether it be Public Works, Public Safety, um, and even Planning Development, um, there are different facets, and it seems like we're really covering our bases now, and like, a lot of different things have been thought of. So, uh, speak highly that I do appreciate the research that's been put in thus far. Um, yeah, and so questions are highly encouraged, and other thoughts, and, and we knew that, uh, coming in tonight, uh, to tonight, that it would probably be a good thing to have questions and discussion revolving around it, therefore, uh, maybe bringing up some other ideas or perspectives that we have yet to think of before unrolling this and implementing it. So that would be great.
Councilmember Osmos.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and Mr. Christensen, wonderful recap. You didn't ramble. Um, one piece that we also, uh, had a lot of discussion about at the committee level was educating the public. And, uh, because nobody wants to tow anybody's car. I mean, that, just like when we do a parade, when we go down, when we have done the snow emergencies in downtown, the, the goal is to not have to tow anybody's car. So education was key to get the information out there. So once it is kind of firmed up how it's going to happen, what exactly the steps are, um, that the public needs to, um, take, then, um, I think we're, we're going to hit this hard with education, with the paper, with the radio, and make sure that everybody understands, uh, what's expected of them to make our streets safe. Um, I think that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, maybe we could call on Mr. Manzer to speak directly to, um, first, um, how, when, when, uh, a snow emergency would be established and, and declared? Um, and then number two, um, when the program is first, uh, beginning, how exactly are we going to go about? Because a- as we know from the numbers that we saw, uh, previous snowfall, there were literally hundreds of cars in certain areas, and we know that that's logistically impossible to, um, to tow slash impound hundreds of cars, so we're going to address that as well. But if Mr. Manzer would be so kind as to address, uh, some of those topics, uh, maybe shed light on those for us, that would be great.
Thank you, Mr. Plowman and council. Um, so we had this discussion last year, I remember we talked about, we kind of, we targeted the east side, and we, we kind of went through that, and so, um, I just got some notes here, because this has been a couple weeks ago, but we had snow, and I think it was Thanksgiving weekend, and we had two snow events, one right prior to Thanksgiving, we got about six inches of snow, and then we got another snow on Saturday of that weekend was about three inches of snow, I think. So Sunday morning, um, we plowed snow, and we started at 4:00 AM. And so I, I thought for the heck of it, I'm going to drive, so I drove the entire city from, uh, 18th Street Southwest all the way to Lakeland Drive, and I didn't go south of Wilmer Avenue, and I didn't go north of Highway 12, and I didn't go through the downtown. So I took out that part, I didn't drive. I do, this was mostly residential area. And on the east side of town, I counted 238 parked cars in, in that area. The west side of town, I counted 346 parked cars that we plowed around on that Sunday. Um, I think that number would have been higher the day before Thanksgiving, plus, for one reason, it was the day before Thanksgiving, so a lot of people were probably in town with their families. The se- second was our first major snow, snow event, so people probably weren't prepared, maybe here. And so I think that that number, that I gave you of 584 cars was a smaller number than what it was on the Wednesday prior to. Um, with that being said, I did not go north of the railroad tracks at all, I did not go, uh, south of Wilmer Avenue. I did actually go into Pheasant Run, we had some damage done to something over there, so I had to go pick up some stuff, so I thought, well, as long as I'm in Pheasant Run, I'll run through there. I did not go anywhere east of, uh, 25th Street, I just kind of got to the little area, and I had 40 cars in the Pheasant Run area. Each one of those areas in Pheasant Run, and where I seen vehicles, all had driveways that were sitting empty, you know, it's just a, I, I suppose it was a convenience thing for the people that lived there that they didn't want to, you know, just park, and they're used to that. So some of the things that I brought up at our meetings before is that, that happens with us is, is, um, on an event, we plow, we plow the entire city, and we have nine different plow routes, not including parking lots or the airport, or sidewalks or paths, these are just plow routes that, um, go by residential places. So I feel like most areas of town within a couple hours have a street within a few blocks of them that's been plowed. Most snowfalls, six hours, we're pretty much gone by everything. Um, maybe a little, it, that's providing I have a full staff to, you know, that things happen where you're short and you're shuffling people around. But, um, I, I had a person call me that lived on southeast 11th Street in the south of Bethesda area, neighborhood there, and he calls me up and he says, hey, I'm new to town, I rent here, my landlord doesn't allow me to park in the driveway, your plow went by and plowed me in, is there a chance that he could come back? I'll move the cars so he could get it. So I, I called the guy that does that area, and he happened to be just like a block away, so he swung back and took care of it. But what struck me was that the landlord didn't allow him to park in the driveway, but yet there would have been room for him to park in the driveway. Typically, we have 10 to 12 snow events a year, and I, I don't foresee this happening on every snowfall, but there are bigger snowfalls where I think it, it needs to happen. And, um, so if we have 10 to 12 events a year, maybe half of those events would be something that would declare a snow emergency. As far as the timing, we talked about it, that's really a key component. Um, if you remember last Sunday, I think it was Sunday or Mon- yes, it would have been last Monday, we plowed snow, we got like five inches or something, but the forecast was three to five inches, three to five inches, and Sunday night, nothing was happening, nothing was happening, so I conferred with a couple guys, I said, well, let's go to work at five anyways, so I can get the guys to know that the day before we go to five. We ended up getting a lot more snow than I thought. Had I known that snow was coming, that might have been a perfect example that we could have called a snow emergency, but the same token, you don't want to call a snow emergency and not get the snow either. So that wa- the timing was not good in that snowfall. Where it would really be helpful is if we're in a snowfall during the day, and we know that, okay, we've got three, four inches on the ground, looks like we're going to get two or three tonight, let's call a snow emergency at 4:00, and we're going to start plowing at 4:00 in the morning, a citywide snow emergency, and, um, please have your car off the street. Once we've been ca- plowed by curb to curb, you're welcome to park back there. Thing that happens a lot of times too is that people park, and we plow around them, so they get out and they park right in front of it. So we don't have a chance to get that off, and pretty soon you have ice buildup, and, and then we, you know, we broke equipment hitting that ice buildup, or, you know, big chunks fly off and knock mailboxes over, and we're notorious for knocking them over anyways without having that to it. So timing is a real issue. Um, one of the things we talked about is, I mean, nobody wants to tow vehicles, it's an inconvenience, it's also an inconvenience for us to go around these vehicles too. And, um, one of the things I, Sean and I wrote, I think that was last year, a couple of our parking lots that host our, that our apartments, parking lots, placard their parking lots prior to a snow event, said, no parking in our parking lot until this lot is cleared, park in the city streets. We had two streets, we couldn't even get a snowplow down because there were so many cars there. That would be a real tragedy if there was a fire in that, that facility. So just some things to think about. I know it's not going to be easy, I know it's going to be an educational thing. Uh, we had some ideas about, instead of, uh, you know, ticketing and towing, there would be, there's no way we could ticket and tow 500 and some cars if that was the case. Um, 20 cars would be a lot, but, you know, um, we talked in these meetings about, maybe we get some, uh, placards or stickers or whatever that I could, I could, uh, get some engineering staff when we had a snow event, say, okay, let's call this a snow emergency event, and you go ahead of these, we got these seven different routes, and some of us could go placard, just put these stickers on cars saying, this would be a snow event, you would have been ticketed or towed or both, you know, and then explain where to get the information on how to, you know, be alerted about, about it. And the way I see it, it's a, probably at best, it's an eight-hour inconvenience, for the worst-case scenario, it's an eight-hour inconvenience for people. Um, best-case scenario, it's a half-hour, I, you know, so. And if you have any other questions, I'd be, entertain anything you have to ask me, I guess.
Councilmember, uh, views?
Well, first of all, um, being downtown, I want to say you guys do a great job, because I went down there at 5:00 in the morning to bake, and I was expecting piles of I went down there at 5:00 in the morning to bake, and I was expecting piles of snow, and it was done, and I was amazed. And, but second, our driveway, we have two kids that park in the street, so if we had a text message at night, that would be really helpful, because we go to bed, we forget. We leave, my husband and I leave first before them, so we don't think about having them park in the driveway, but if we remember, we have them park there, and then we move them out and put them back when we go for work.
Right. So, this system that we, we kind of looked into this alert system, and, and that's exactly how it works, you'd get a text message as soon as we decided we would do that, and the way I understood it, that would be Sean or myself, or together, we would declare that we're going to do this, and then we would just activate it through our phone, that this would go out, and it, and it goes out to, apparently they have a database already in place of different phone numbers for areas, plus you get people to sign up for it. Am I looking at what other cities do? I've seen several cities that have the exact same thing, and it says, winter parking, click on here for alerts, you know, and then you subscribe, I don't know if you subscribe to it, or you're part of it anyways, and then you'd get that text message, email, phone call, or all the, all three.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it really looked like a slick deal. The one we were looking at, they talked about like water main repair in cities, like, they, one city I read, boil your, you don't have to boil your water any longer now because they got the water main repaired, and that was part of that alert system. And you can even map it down to, say, a neighborhood, let's say you were going to do Pheasant Run, you know, you could just alert the Pheasant Run numbers and stuff.
Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Mr. Manzer, for all of your help and expertise in, in helping craft this and, and direct us just a little bit further. We did discuss other various topics, we know that when it comes to having a location to move your vehicle to, that was one of the most difficult and contentious parts. Now, it wasn't contentious between us, but it's just, it's difficult because staff understands, and the council understands that with apartment complexes, as well as the number of rental properties, that getting the word out there and coming up with solutions for where vehicles are going to go and when is an integral part of making this work. We also, another staff member identified the fact that we do have a database for all of the landlord properties, as well as other rental properties in the entire city, within the entire city limits. We can craft and generate a letter that would go out to them prior to this taking place, explaining what Wilmer was going to be doing when a snow emergency is, is declared. We still don't know what kind of authority we have in terms of, you know, we have heard comments about potentially landlords not allowing parking in their, in their driveway, and that is a, that's admittedly a stumbling block, because it seems a little unusual that a landlord would do that, I guess, but maybe there's something that I am not thinking of. But, that aside, we're thinking of different ways utilizing technology, utilizing the databases that we have, and the communication techniques that we have, to reach just as many people as possible, to educate them prior to this ever happening, to try to get people. And then, followed by, the first time, the second time, the third time, when this starts taking place, it wouldn't be the intent to get out there and start towing vehicles, because we understand that there's going to be a learning curve. So, if there could be something like a neon sticker that might be somewhat difficult and annoying to remove from your side window, but also containing instructions, a snow emergency has been declared, you know, these are the steps that have to be taken when there's a snow emergency declared, here are the places that you can go for more information and whatnot. That's something that would be mostly an annoyance, but there would not be a financial penalty, there would not be the inconvenience of having to go get your car from an impound lot, and we would allow that to continue for some duration of time before actually upping the ante, so to speak, and, and we do expect that the learning curve then would kind of kick in, and that, you know, if we receive the kind of snowfall that we did, say, last year, for example, as this continues, the number of parked cars we would expect to continually drop, and word-of-mouth spreads, and, and the other information on social media, local news outlets and whatnot continues to spread. But our number one main concern always is safety for the citizens of Wilmer, and then expediency and efficiency when it comes to our Public Works crews being out there. And also, you know, they have their, their routes down, they have them well-defined where they're going to be and when they're going to be there. And Mr. Manzer said on, on a number of occasions that if they did not have to deal with parked vehicles, they could quite substantially increase or decrease the amount of time, rather, that it would take them to actually get through the entire city. So, instead of being done with the entire city by, say, 10:00 o'clock, if these obstacles were removed, they could be done potentially a lot sooner, allowing for better, higher-quality cleanup. So, that being said, we know that it's very aggressive, but we are trying to do everything we can to tie up the loose ends.
Two quick things. This has been, my understanding is, this has been talked about for about 15 or 20 years. We are committed to making this happen in 2020, by the time this, this all gets finalized and the information is disseminated to the public. This is going to happen. So, we need to start educating, we need to start thinking about how we're going to tweak this and make this as seamless as possible. And just talking about knowing when or how, when you have to plan to put your car in your driveways, I like to think that it will become second nature, that you're going to be watching the news. I think just about every major snow event that we have, there is, you know it, I mean, they're saying on the news, we're going to get seven to 10 inches, and you see which part of the state is getting what, and we're going to know that, that snow event is coming, and hopefully, again, it will be second nature, that get your cars off the street, because the plows are going to come through.
Just no comments. I just want to point out, for those of you that were fortunate enough to watch Emily Larson, the mayor of Duluth, report that she gave after their snow event, their big snow event that they had, they had parts of their community that hadn't been plowed for three days. And so, kudos to our Public Works people, you guys are rock stars, so we appreciate that. And surprising thing to me is they have 40 pieces of plow equipment. So, take a look, they have 570 miles, 40 pieces of plow equipment. I don't know how many pieces we have, but I think you said we have nine routes. So, I mean, so we, you know, our guys do good work, so. Thank you guys for addressing this.
And Mr. Mayor? With that, I would like to, I would like to make a motion, actually, to, to authorize city staff to finalize the drafting of a, a policy, a formalized snow emergency policy for the city of Wilmer, and implement the policy beginning 2020.
Second.
It was made in second of discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If opposed, the motion does carry. Great work. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me jump back to my notes here. I apologize, because it seems like I've been talking a really, really long time, so.
It was just that part about throwing me under the bus.
Yeah, no, I offered to jump there too. And you know what? After that discussion regarding the snow emergency, looks like we were done about 10 after 7:00, so I would actually move to file the minutes.
Second.
It was made in second to file minutes, discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If the same sign, that motion carries. We're going to take a five-minute recess.